Buddy, good to see you all. Uh, call this meeting the New Shoreham Town Council to order. Today is Wednesday, May twenty first. It is seven oh one P M. Uh, our first order of business is to convene the Board of License Commissioners to, to, uh, address, uh, mobile soup food establishment application. Can I have a motion to convene that?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor to get by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Alberto, why don't you come up?
Yep. And Keith, I'm gonna recuse.
Oh, right, of course, yes.
Of the applicants or family, so for that reason.
Of course. Um. When last we met, in episode one, uh, you were gonna talk to Chris and Paul and, and just sort of have clearer picture of, of, you know, what the hours were gonna be, et cetera. Can you talk us through how that went?
Um, yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna do probably eleven thirty.
Uh huh.
Eleven thirty, just to kind of like pace, you know, pace the people out and get, you get everything shut down by at least by twelve.
Yeah.
You know?
Did you find a truck that you like?
I, I did. It's, it's on the works. It's being built as we speak. I got, I got most of the equipment. Um, I could pretty much, I, I sent some attachments of the exact location of where it's gonna be. Um, I got, uh, I talked to these two fine gentlemen here, um, to tell them exactly where it's gonna be. Uh, if you look really, if you look, you'll see, you gotta, um, got that, correct?
Great.
Um, and I sent some images, some of some, some A I. Images of, of, of what it could look like, kind of staged it there and, and and took some pictures with some, um, like a highlighter to let you know exactly where it's gonna be.
Great. Terrific. Uh, Paul and Chris, you guys square? Yes. Great. Terrific. Any questions from the council about this application? Excellent. Uh, then can I have a motion to grant, uh, this mobile food establishment to Alberto Sanchez doing business as Pizza Shack? Location being Payne's Dock, eight seventy-eight West Side Road, Platte five lot zero.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Uh, the second thing we have to do for the people at home is we establish by, 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 uh, council action the actual locations of the mobile food establishments, establishment, which means that we have to add, um, Alberto's new license. Um, so Laurel, do I have to go through all of them? Or do I merely have to establish Platte, 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 Platte five lot zero as one of the locations? Okay. Can I have a motion to add, um, uh, Platte five lot zero, location Payne's Dock to the list of approved mobile food establishments?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the Board of License Commissioners?
So moved.
In a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Better be good pizza, brother. Yeah, well, there's no land.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Alberto. Thanks for bearing with us while we.
No, it's fine. Fine. Thanks for your time.
Great. Tristan? Sound like a parent. Oh, there you go. Oh, you do. Which one? What's that? Oh, you're, we're all set. Yep.
Yeah.
All we had to do was add his, so.
I don't know, I've never seen it before.
Is there any public comment tonight? Chris, come aboard. Chris and Chris, we'll go alphabetically.
Chris Blaine, um.
Yes, we did.
I just wondered if there was any update on that wall situation down by the mansion?
Amy, uh, well, we don't need, it'll be on our next agenda.
I just hope the town's gonna, uh, ask for some legal fee reimbursement because of some going on over a year. I imagine it's racking up the bill. One other question, um, I had an idea, I don't know, you can take it or leave it, but a painted rock. Now that that's all paved nice, nice around it, just seems to be in a pretty stupid place. Um, I think it's only a matter of time before somebody either slides into it, runs into it, take your pick, winter, summer, you get a good snowfall, some ice. Pick it up, move it down to that area of townland by the Indian Cemetery, next to Old Center Road. Put it right at the east end of that. People can paint to their heart's content. There's plenty of parking, not gonna bother anybody. Uh, I think once you get a bunch of cars in there with people painting that rock, I don't know if you've seen that yet, but it, it gets, it gets pretty tight in there and when they're being paved, people are going a little bit faster. There's nothing to slow them down. Um, and then the last thing is gonna ask the council if they could amend the ordinance. It was changed regarding hunting on townland, Platte one lot sixteen. That's the area around the North Light.
Yep.
The town amended that ordinance.
Right.
To allow further hunting that Fish and Wildlife does. The town doesn't do it anymore, but it would be nice to see the town amend that ordinance back and just say to Fish and Wildlife, look, it's, it's pretty heavily traveled out there now. Winter, spring, fall, summer, I mean, there's people out there every day. Now you get the seal rescues going on. We finally got bald eagles out here that are nesting. I don't know if they're successful, but it would be nice to have those things have a refuge that's really a refuge.
Anyway. Great.
Okay, thank you.
Chris Warful.
Chris Warful, Ebbets Hollow, uh, two, two items. Um, the first has to do with the last Land Trust meeting, Block Island Land Trust. I went there because they had on agenda an item about, uh, whether or not to publicly stream and record their meetings. It was one of the more surreal meetings I've ever been in, in the town of New Shoreham, and that's, of course, saying a lot. The lawyers for the Land Trust were arguing against it because it would, um, give greater accountability to their proceedings. And they would have to be, uh, exhibiting more decorum. And then there were concerns by some people on the board that, um, there would be a history of their, um, meetings and that they would have to, you know, be held accountable for them. It was in, I was incredulous. So I was like, yeah, that's, that's right. That's what you're supposed to be doing. Uh, and there was a lot of other concerns about, you know, legacy of things. And I said, I'm sure all of you have email accounts. Many of you may have social media accounts. You face that every day. And they didn't even make a motion to vote on whether or not to record and stream their meetings. They use this building. Taxpayer supported all the technology that we have provided. And they, in my opinion, wanted to be, you know, under the radar by their own comments and not have recordings of their meetings. This is to me unacceptable as a taxpayer because they are a eight hundred pound gorilla or elephant, whatever you choose, in the room. And we are taxpayers and we deserve the right to have those meetings recorded and streamed. So I'm asking you to require them to do that. And if you want to do it through a, a agenda item with them, I understand, but I think it'd just be administrative. There's no reason for not doing this, and what they said was so implausible, it was disturbing. The second item I would like to talk to you about is with regard to the Rescue Barn Solar System. I have done quite a bit of work on this as a volunteer in this community. I have given numbers that show that this has to be done if you accept it's in the taxpayer interest. I would. I would like to have this done as administrative, um, process and not me coming before you to just keep hounding you on this. It's not good for anybody. So I would like you in a working, work session to set up a process, whether to do this or not. And if you don't do it, I mean, whether or not you do it or not, it needs to be communicated to the taxpayers. I've shown you that this is uh, resilient, positive, taxpayer positive. I can't think of any reason not to do this. So you need to basically be on the record for your decision. And I don't want to be coming for you like this. It's, it's kind of embarrassing for me and for everybody else to do this. Can you please set a, a process to have this decision made?
Terrific. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anybody else this evening? See you later, Chris.
Keith?
Yes.
Can I, uh, do we have Jeff Taylor from Mayor May Fourth who has a limited window?
Oh.
If the council would consider moving number seven on the agenda forward?
Is there objection? Okay, yes, please. Hi, Jeff.
Hi, Keith, members of the council, how are you?
Fabulous.
All right. I, I do appreciate your accommodation is both, Rick is actually in a committee. I was able to step out for a little bit here. Um, up at the State House, but I wanted to be able to provide just an update to the, uh, to the council on the bills that we've been advocating for on behalf of New Shoreham and provide a little bit of insight, uh, on the current budget situation for the state. And, uh, one or two other items that we've been tracking on behalf of, of the town. So, um, unless there's any questions or other additional information you'd like, uh, for me to report on, I can, you know, kind of begin with that outline.
Why don't you get through your report and then we'll assess how much time you have, Jeff?
Great. Okay. Again, thanks, everyone, for the accommodation. I, I do appreciate it. Uh, I want to run through, uh, the legislative agenda that we've been advocating for here, uh, at the State House on behalf of New Shoreham. I'm gonna start with, um, the two bills in the respective chambers having to do with the authorizing the town of New Shoreham, uh, to adopt a tax classification plan for occupied and owner occupied, um, properties. Uh, both of those bills have been heard in their respective committees, uh, which is the housing and municipal government committees. Um, there were, um, relatively no questions. In fact, uh, most of the committee members thought that this was a positive step for the municipality to try and address the concerns, uh, both on the housing side and from, uh, a potential revenue, uh, perspective. Uh, I, I will note that, um, there was one comment in the Senate hearing where, um, the chairman of the committee indicated that uh, there were a number of other towns pursuing very similar, um, legislative proposals, uh, some that it had already passed into law. So he just wanted us to check to confirm with those other legislative proposals that the language was consistent so that there could be no question should the, uh, the bills pass that, you know, their one bill authorizing the town to do the same issue has a different, uh, legislative mandate through language. So we're reviewing those bills now, and if we have to make some changes, we'll do so to make, to be consistent, but the intent still remains the same, uh, and the authorizing language would, um, still be, uh, effective, uh, with the purposes as intended. We just may have to make sure that they're consistent with other towns. Um, the second issue was, uh, on the, uh, the funding and the bond referendums for, uh, ten, uh, I think it's ten point four million dollars for, um, the school improvements. Happy to report that the, uh, House bill for that authorizing bond was voted out of, uh, the House Finance Committee yesterday. It'll more than likely be for the full House, uh, next week. And the Senate bill has already passed the full Senate and is sitting in the Finance Committee on the House side. So we fully anticipate, uh, action on, uh, all those bills. Uh, and they'll be moving through the process within the next few weeks. Um. Let's see, um, on the water, um, Resources Management Bill where, um, I believe that in the bill itself, it was, uh, putting in an exemption for the, uh, or authorizing the Water Resource Board to deny uh, service to areas outside its designated service area. Uh, the unique thing with this bill is that when it went down to be drafted, uh, the Legislative Council had a, I identical bill from the town of Jamestown. So they decided on their own to combine the bills.
Same bill, different politics, right, Jeff?
Exactly. Um, and we ran into a, a very, uh, tumultuous situation that's occurring in Jamestown and we want no part of that. So, uh, we have requested the bill to be amended to remove Jamestown, uh, so as to not get caught up in a Uh, so as to not get caught up in a some political turmoil that's occurring with Jamestown and their water authority. Uh, in particular lawsuits that are pending in Jamestown. There's no problem in removing Jamestown, uh, from a bill so to do it individually. Uh, but as a result, we kind of got caught up a little bit with some concerns. About the Jamestown situation where the build Rhode Island Builders Association. Uh, is. Is not supportive of, uh, either measure. And they have some concerns with, uh, the proposal, uh, for us, particularly in New Shoreham. And Jamestown regardless of the issues, uh, that are taking place in Jamestown. So. Uh, we're in discussions with the Rhode Island Builders Association. They are claiming that there is a regulatory process. Uh, that exists in statute that I believe was a law that passed in two thousand twenty-three, they're claiming. Uh, whereas there is a process through regulation, uh, that can take place. Where a water authority has the right to deny. A residence or commercial entity that is seeking to. Tap into the water resources where is outside the designated service area. Um, so I'm reviewing some of that, uh, language in that existing statute and the, and the regs that go along with it. But I did want to ask the council or if anyone might be, uh, because this came up too, whether or not. This proposal is more proactive in anticipation of trying to preserve. The water resources you have now on the island. Uh, or was it, um, sort of reactionary to a particular. Case or applications that have been submitted, um, that would require the water. Service company to provide service outside of its designated area.
My understanding and recollection is that it is, um, purely, uh, what if we get into this situation? Kind of a piece of legislation. So it's unlike, uh, Jamestown in that very important respect, Jeff.
Okay.
Uh, this is, this is about a very unique situation that we have on our island. Uh, and with all due respect to the Rhode Island Builders Association, who I, 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 I don't think probably have a single member out here. I would suggest that, uh, you know, maybe they pay attention to. Situations where there's actually a matter in conflict, which there is not here.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. And I have also. Even before, um. You know, either, you know, taking a going further into the regulatory process that they cited me, that. The island is a very unique, um, municipality in the sense that. There's no option to tap into an existing resource to a neighboring city or town. Uh, and there is also the added step that the island has to desalinate, um, uh, their water before it gets into. Um, the serviceable potable water, uh, that goes out to the community. So, um. I've stressed the very uniqueness of the island as, uh, both of our sponsors, Senator DiMario. And Senator and Representative Spears. So, um, we, we continue to push back. Uh, in the builders, um, with regard to the very uniqueness of, uh, New Shoreham. And that this is a step in order to preserve the existing resources they have. And in effort to, uh, sort of control that measure and, and maintain service to those that currently are already. Eligible service, um, entities, um, uh, under the existing resource. So. Um, we haven't, you know, given into anything and we're going to try and stay the course with the bill as it exists. But I just wanted to highlight, you know, some pushback that we've gotten.
Great. How about the landing fee, Jeff?
Yeah. So, uh, save the best for last here on the landing fee. Um, we got a lot of positive response on the landing fee before the committee, both chambers. Heard that. And in fact, some of the committee members in both chambers. Indicated, uh, why hadn't we sort of sought this increase? Earlier and they felt that it was a good resource for the, the town, uh, given what they've sort of seen on the. The uptick in volume on tourism over the last few years. Uh, very supportive of the town's measure to take this initiative and increase the fee for the. Tourism and other, uh, services needed to provide, uh, uh, for the municipality. So. Those were all positive remarks and, um, we got very positive reception from the chairs of both committees. Uh, and we haven't heard anything, any pushback, uh, on the proposal. Now, with that, I will bring to the council's attention that. There was a introduction of a fee increase for the town of Narragansett. In the same amount of fifty cents to go to a full dollar for a landing fee, uh, for the town of Narragansett. And that was introduced on. Friday of last week. Uh, so the town of Narragansett seems to have got wind of what New Shoreham was doing. Despite the fact that they raised their fee only three years ago. Uh, and are now seeking another increase. So I bring that up only because there is some concern now that. The overall fee, um, would go up. A full dollar, given the two fifty cent increase request if both were to go through. And I don't know what Interstate Navigation may or may not be saying. Uh, I realized that New Shoreham had an agreement or at least. A discussion that there would be no opposition, uh, to our requested increase. But I don't know what may be transpiring or what has happened or occurred with. Uh, the request coming out of Narragansett. Rick and I are.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Amy, uh, handle that piece.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
This is a topic in flux. I did have a conversation with, uh, Interstate at the end of last week. Um, who indicated they, um. Had not changed their position or their evaluation in any way and, um, would continue to. Not object to New Shoreham's or Narragansett's introduction. And, um, we all expected to be moving ahead and talking about, um, updating the agreement as soon as that legislation passed.
Terrific. Thank you, Amy. Did you get that, Jeff?
I did. Okay.
Okay.
All right, good. We'll maintain, we'll just stay on top of that too, just in case, uh, particularly and we'll continue to monitor the. The Narragansett Increase Bill, just so we can listen if any comments are made, uh, at the particular hearings on those bills.
Tell me, is, does this statewide, uh, property tax on non-owner occupied have any legs?
No, I don't believe that that has, uh, a, a lot of momentum behind it at all.
Now, uh, client management would be since you passed that resolution. I don't think that bill has any legs.
Right. That was, that was the death now. That, that, that's basically killed the bill on its own. So congratulations. Um, so one other item, I just wanted to give a quick update on kind of where the state budget is. So everyone's, uh, yeah, some. Idea. I'm happy to, you know, dive into more if you have any questions specifically as you maybe hear some news about where things stand, but. There was, uh, last week, there was some reports that came out. As the state normally does at this time of year on sort of the revenue projections compared to where they were in November. And the costs for the state, what they call caseloads, usually social service expenditures, uh, on the state expenditure side. Uh, comparing them again to what they projected in November. Uh, the good news is, is that, um, based on the caseloads, which were about even to where they were in November. No, no, uh, discernible increase that would impact the budget at any level. Um, so that was positive. And then. On the revenue side, they did see a significant increase in personal income taxes and lottery, uh, proceeds. A little bit of a downswing on sales tax and, uh, and bank taxes. But overall, when you combine the two, it was an eighty million dollar increase in projected revenues. So if you take what was the, um, the budget that the governor was working with. Which was about a two hundred fifty million dollar deficit. You're looking at now, uh, a one hundred and seventy million dollar deficit. Um, that the, that the legislature has to work with based on these new numbers. But keep in mind that there are some proposals in the governor's budget that have already. Not necessarily been, um, shot down, but there's been some significant questions. On, uh, the legality and the receptiveness of the General Assembly. Two of those in mind are a proposal about ten million dollars in revenue from a, a digital, uh, ad tax that the governor proposed. It's been challenged in a number of other states and still hasn't been implemented. So I don't think there's an appetite for that. And that's about ten million that was in the governor's budget. And, um, the governor's proposed cigarette tax. Is seen as, uh, and not enough to generate, uh, the revenue that, uh, some of the advocates that were pushing for this. Uh, feel and there's some pushback also from, uh, some sales. Uh, entities on increasing that particular tax. So. It's minimal, but, um, still another revenue generated tax that was in the governor's budget that may not make it into the general assemblies. So, um, good news, operating on a lower deficit than before, but still a gap to fill. And then there's obviously the questions. That will remain probably through the remainder of, uh, the budget negotiations as to what happens in Washington. Particular, uh, on the Medicaid side, which have a, a significant impact on the state budget, but. They can't wait for, for Congress to move a, a budget. So. More than likely, whatever happens in Washington, if there are cuts that impact the state. The state may have to return in the off session for a supplemental budget. But again, that's all sort of. Projections, uh, and we'll wait to see how that plays out.
Jeff, is Rhode Island a provider tax state?
Yes, they do, uh, take advantage of the provider tax.
Cause if that goes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's somebody unknown. You know, if that cap on the provider tax, uh, gets implemented. Um, it certainly would impact how they, uh, generate revenue through that process with. Hospitals and other facilities that they levy the provider tax and take advantage of the match.
Of course.
Jeff, since, since we have a resolution here in, in support of reforming the CRMC that we were going to send, have you heard anything about whether there's any legs? Talk to what three years now of discussion as to what to do with the CRMC?
Sure, that is, uh, um. Councilwoman, that is a pretty, um. An issue that the legislature is taking into serious consideration. Uh, there is. A, there are competing bills on that measure. There are three versions of what the legislature is considering for reform. Uh, the preferred, I think, one that the council is looking at, uh, to endorse would be. One that Save the Bay and a number of other, um, environmental organizations, uh, and other. Groups and organizations that are impacted by CRM C decisions. Are endorsing, which would be to, uh, remove the appointed council. And change the council format into a, uh, more like a state agency level department with a director. And then the council would be advisory only. There is a competing bill to, uh, do the same, get rid of the council, but move. The, uh, CRM C under the umbrella of the Department of Environmental Management, D E M. Um, that is another proposal. And the final proposal is, um. Keeping the council as an appointed body, but changing the requirements for those appointed. And specifically having members with knowledge of coastal resource management planning. Uh, municipal planning, um, and other, um. Geological and shoreside management concepts that are required in order to be a member of the council. So, um, they're all, they all have been heard in their respective chambers. And, uh, there's continued work to try and push for. Uh, the full reform, which would be removing the full council and moving it to a department status. Uh, so that's an ongoing, uh, discussion with leadership on those bills. Although the criteria for the appointments bill, um, is getting some attention on the House side and the Speaker. Has been quoted as claiming he'd like to make that, try that approach as opposed to completely reforming the full council. I'm completely deleting the full council. So, um. Still in flux, uh, we're working very closely with, uh. Save the Bay and others are working very closely with both sponsors of the bills to try and push for a, a. Full reform. Like I can tell you that the Attorney General, who is the sponsor of that particular bill. Is strongly endorsing abolishing the council.
And that's the bill that we're, our resolution is supporting, just so you'll know for your own.
Excellent. Okay. I appreciate that. And, uh, I will relay that along to the Attorney General's office also.
Any other questions from the council for Jeff? Amy, anything? Jeff, thank you so much for taking the time. Uh, these kinds of updates, uh, from someone who's there are really, really helpful to us.
No, I, I really appreciate the accommodation and, um, you know, anytime, uh, you've got any questions. Through this formal process and reporting, I'm happy to do so, but, uh, both Rick and I are available and in touch with Amy, but. You know, for the council members, if you have any other questions, feel free to get in touch with us. On, uh, any of the items that we discussed or anything else that you're hearing about from respective, uh, to legislative proposals.
Terrific. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, back to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Second.
All those in favor and to get by saying aye. Oppose no, the ayes have it. Um, we have our three dangling, um.
Vacancy.
Uh, vacancies, um, that we've been talking about for, uh, over a year now, I would say. I'll just say, uh, as I have a dozen times. Uh, as you just heard in, in the report, uh, from Jeff. Uh, water and sewer issues are. Uh, quietly, uh, essential, uh, to the island. Um, and if you ever wanted to, um. Had a, had an inkling that you'd like to get involved in something, this is a place where we need bright and capable people and I would. Really appreciate, uh, an application or two or five.
And it's, it's, it's an alternate position. So, you know, you're, you're there when they need you. Um, it's not necessarily, you know, every single month, but.
Right.
Um, it would be helpful to get a few, a few backups, uh, going forward there.
Indeed. Um, can I have a motion to open a public hearing on these news, new, the new zoning ordinance, please?
Second.
All those in favor and to get by saying aye. Oppose no. Um. Uh, all right. So we have, we have Peter. Peter, I, I'm, I must confess. Uh, that a colleague of mine and I were chuck, just chuckling to each other before the meeting. We started to read this and, and frankly struggled with it. So, uh. I say that, uh, because y- y- you should, you should expect us to just want to, to want initially a very basic. Uh, description of the, of the why and the what. That a, that a layperson can understand.
Understood.
Are you kicking off Amy or is Peter?
I'm going to kick it right to Peter.
Oh.
All right.
Peter, uh, you have that warm introduction from Amy. I hope you, I hope. Thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you for having me. So I think this is an ordinance that was proposed last year and went to you folks. Uh, and then you folks had some confusion, um, which it sounds like is, um, continuing based on the, um. The, the technical, the technical nature of this ordinance. So this. Section of the zoning ordinance applies to the large homes. So the large homes in New Shoreham. Few different categories, but generally over four thousand square feet have enhanced. Review as, as they're proposed in the town. So within this section, there's several letters coming down to G. There's concern about decks that come out from the house. So. Based on feedback we got from you folks, there was a, my partner, Kim and I put together diagrams that were reviewed by the planning board. And I believe that's pages three and four of the document. That information can be attached to the zoning ordinance. Um, and then this new sections, new subsection G goes in at the end of this. Large residential structure, section four oh six of the zoning ordinance. large residential structure, section 406 of the zoning ordinance.
Peter, can I ask a really basic question?
Absolutely.
Is, does this in, result in more of the deck? And, and balcony and porches being needing approval or less?
I do not know the answer to that. I know that this doesn't come up often because it only comes up as a review element when you have those large houses. So I, we'd have to have the zoning folks go back and look at how often we're getting those large houses. And then within that, how often?
I don't think, I don't think I asked that question fairly or, or, or clearly, Peter. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
That was my fault. Would you say that this regulation allows for more coverage or less? More square footage or less on these outdoor features?
So the 1,200 square foot restriction is going away. This is also only on decks that are more than five feet above ground level. So this would only apply to those decks, you know, second, third floor decks, really where folks are trying to take advantage of vistas or have, you know, elevated living space up above the first floor.
So this would enable larger decks that were over four feet above ground level?
Right.
That's what I thought. So I don't know whether this is the right time, but I, but I'm not a supporter of that notion.
But I think that, you know, the council's free to amend this ordinance as they see fit.
Why do we need to do it except for that?
Why do you need to amend the ordinance?
Yeah.
So I think there, there was some confusion in implementing the existing language. So the planning board was looking for greater clarity to assist in the implementation of the ordinance. Like the two, folks found the two walls language confusing.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just, Robbie, I see you sitting over there. Do you, do you understand why this is, this is becoming, comes to us now?
Well, I guess the, one of your questions wasn't really answered. So on a large house, all the protrusions, wherever they may be, are calculated in the total square footage. This wouldn't be in addition to, correct?
So that's a good question. Thank you. Peter, did you get that question?
So I think the question is whether the, the decks and balconies count as part of the living area.
Yeah.
Let, let's just a little simplify it. So would, if you added this 1,200, it wouldn't put you over the current calculations that are on the record now?
It doesn't change the calculations listed in subsection B.
But to refine that a little bit, Peter, to clarify, I think Tristan and I are probably asking the same question. And that is, okay, you have a 4,000 square foot house. When you calculate the 4,000 square foot house, does that include exterior decks over five feet? Or does, or is that in addition?
I'm not the zoning official. I don't know the answer to that. But it's part of the structure.
I think we're, we're having the same questions.
Yeah. Say, do you have counted that that question too, which is what's limit? I mean, we have at least one builder right now who's being super creative about the sheds, the square footage for a shed being attached to a home. So I'm just seeing if this isn't calculated into the square footage, just a lot of creative decks.
So I'm going to, I'm going to request something. I don't know whether my colleagues would agree to this, but I would really like a bit of a run of show here. Like here's, here's why we needed to, here's why we need to do this. Here's, here's, here's our, our rationale for it. It, it adds or it doesn't add external square footage, et cetera, et cetera. Because as this stands now, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable voting for it, and I don't want to not vote for it and then realize that I misunderstood it. If that makes, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Question too, because we, don't we currently, I'll admit, I don't know a lot about, about this topic. But don't we have something right now that says that you can't have like a, we have a limit on how long a plane can run down a house?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, we do.
And so would just sticking a funny little balcony out? Like be, would, would that mean that you could just keep that run going?
Yeah, does that break the plane?
Broke the plane with your?
No, it doesn't break the plane.
It doesn't break the plane. Okay.
Those diagrams are at the end of the, they're attached at the end of the zoning ordinance. The diagrams are pretty helpful.
Have you seen this? Do you have any questions that are smarter?
With a plane, right?
Yeah, that's, I think that's appendix E, attachment nine.
When I, when I say this, Peter, it is in no way a criticism of your work, but it's almost like there's two paragraphs missing from this, this memo that we received from you with a, with a rationale, if you will. And I, that, that's what I, that's what I don't, that's what I don't feel like I, I have in order to weigh this fairly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine. The, this ordinance was prepared before we were engaged. Right, so we're happy to.
Not about you.
Information. Yep, that's good feedback.
Does this make sense to continue?
Yes.
Yeah, if we could just continue it.
I was going to ask Laurel what date she would like to continue this to. David, please.
This is the first time that I've sat in the audience and asked myself, who the heck asked that I have something happen?
Thank you. Yes. It is a solution in search of a problem.
Yeah.
Looking backwards, literally, it lies to the lot of precious resources that the planning board and at the council, for some of them, none of us understand, and nobody seems to be representing the discussion, so.
David, as I couldn't agree more, and as a, as a. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Can I have a motion to continue this to June 2nd?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
What?
Continue.
Oh, right, we don't want to close it. Okay.
I withdraw my second.
Withdraw your motion. The motion.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the point being with, our intention is not to need to re-advertise.
Yes.
Language, what we need clarity on is the, the context.
God, Millie would have killed me.
How, how, how did this issue arise? What was the problem it was trying to solve and how does it solve it?
Yeah, but I don't think at this point we need to re-advertise the actual proposal.
No, we've already expended sufficient resources on this. Great.
Thank you.
Hey, Peter, thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll see you June 2nd.
All right, beautiful. Amy, I think you're up.
I, I am. So you do have a town manager's report there that I won't read all the way through, but again, try to pick out some highlights. Starting with human services, I do expect that in June we'll probably see the AARP program move forward before the council, so we'll look forward to that. The DEM parking pass has had a great response initially, which is fantastic. Almost a perfect match in terms of the number of long-term placards and the number of applicants and some other interested parties that we can more specifically use short-term placards for. So that's working out well. The website for submitting an application for someone who might need a short-term placard is, is listed there. You can also get there from the newshorehamri.gov webpage under human services.
For, for what it's worth on that, I think Allison is doing a terrific job with it. And to the extent that a real example is helpful, I thought I'd share that. I am taking a person off island on Friday, the Friday of Memorial, Memorial Day weekend, to a doctor's appointment. And I've applied to Allison for a sort of just in case temporary permit. And for those of you who are wondering what this thing is, that's what it's for. You know, that, that sort of thing. I mean, it's entirely possible that we won't need it, but it's also entirely possible that we will. And we'll be able to park on Friday. So please take advantage of it. I, I did have one question that I, I, I didn't see, and maybe I missed, Amy, around the public safety building planning process. How's that, how's that going?
They had a meeting today, which I'm not up to speed on, but I do believe that we're, we're moving ahead. I don't want to say quickly, but at the right pace. I expect that the council will see approval of a contract for Scott Cotell as a consultant to work us through that process and get us to the issuance of an RFQ for design and architectural services. He's been working with the committee on a needs assessment and really formalizing that articulation of the space and configurations and technical and operational requirements that we all may know, but ultimately need to put on paper so that we can be specifying what that building looks like going forward. So that's been very helpful. Both, both chiefs are here and on that committee as well, which is great. We're meeting monthly for anyone who wants to join. Anything, I don't, I guess I don't want to sidelight too much on that, but we can also do an update in June.
That's great.
If people are, if people are curious.
Continuing a pace is fine, is fine.
Things are continuing a pace.
The other thing, which is somewhat related to your report that I wanted, Tristan, you see them from, from the helicopter, but Nancy and Molly, if, if you have any interest in going out to see these seals in our, in our, seeing them from the boat is the, is really, I think, the best way to see them. It's actually really cool and, and really, at least for me, moves me to want to be as protective as possible of that population because it's, it's pretty, it's pretty extraordinary.
Makes me nervous about sharks.
You know, as long as you can swim faster than the person next to you, big, big fine, Nancy.
So Keith, along, along those lines, in terms of anyone who may choose to go out to Sandy Point to see the large number of seals that are there, we would encourage you not to bring your dogs and to keep a safe distance, at least 150 feet. And you'll see additional signage going up, restricting vehicle access and, and other reminders to keep the humans and the animals somewhat separate, so. It's going to be from West Beach as well. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we can get all the way around yet, but we're going to start at the critical ones and work outward.
Great. Sorry, I diverted you.
That's okay. Just a couple of things on the police side. The police department's working on automating the parking ticket process, which is exciting in the background in terms of operations, but also a reminder that as our CSOs come on board, we'll also be doing a lot more parking enforcement so that everyone needs to get into their summer mode of following signage and, and the additional signage that goes up in the seasonal months. Phil Trudell graduates this weekend from the police academy, so he'll be joining us back on island next, I've lost track of the weeks, but next week, which is very exciting. So congratulations to him.
Amy, Nancy and Paul and I were talking about doing a swearing.
Swearing it.
At, at one of the council meetings.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be, that will be great. In terms of highways and public works, spring mowing and trimming is obviously underway and is pretty critical during the next six weeks. Highways is short-staffed, and so that will be a bit of a struggle to stay on top of. You may see some different characters out mowing to facilitate that, but we're trying to stay ahead of it just for that period through June until things slow down.
Plenty of capacity in the clerk's office.
And in, in, in terms of, of public works, can you give us an update next, next meeting about what's going on with the Thomas property?
Sure, we'll do a formal update, but in terms of a sentence or two, this schedule is slow, and there hasn't been as much progress in the last month as we would have hoped. Both Mike and Tom have a meeting with Connecticut Valley tomorrow to try to light that fire and wrap things up. But we'll do a formal update in June.
Okay. I had a similar question about the highways building. Have we had any?
We do not have an update on that. No.
Okay.
Are we still pressing on that?
I would not say we have pressed recently, but it's still on the list.
Okay. So is the, that agreement hasn't been signed yet?
No, it hasn't been signed. We do want to sign it before June 30th from a funding perspective, since we're doing the work. But that will also come with, one of the things we discussed was, was a notice to them of intention not to renew if they weren't going to meet their parts of the obligations.
And I would just like to open up, doesn't have to be here before the council, but I think there, there needs to be a strategic, a strategy conversation around that. You know, rather than just a letter that gets ditched, we should be, in my opinion, we should be enlisting our legislative delegation. We should be engaging with the governor and his staff, you know, et cetera. That's one of, I think, one of the reasons we pay a retainer for that kind of advice and engagement. This is, that's a critical thing, and we're going to wake up some morning and that thing's going to be collapsed.
Speaking of state agencies, DEM and the work at the Bluffs. So that interim repair has been done, if, I don't know if anyone's been down there. So it is open. We are working with DEM on additional signage to remind people that while it is open at the bottom of the stairs, they need to be considering whether it's the right move for them to continue down the path. It's definitely tricky, but it is open for anyone who wants to go down. Are there questions or topics?
Any questions?
I, I had a question from someone today about the library schedule that we're still at a five-day-a-week schedule. Is there a possibility of going back to six days? Just, I'm just throwing it out there because it's not addressed on here, but someone called me and asked me about this today, so.
Amy, how's the automation going in the harbors department, like the police department with the parking? Anything there?
So they've been working pretty hard to get Old Harbor onto their system. It's been a tricky process, but the intention is still there, and they're intending to shift. I can't say how many wrinkles there, there will be. But that's the last element of the harbors that hasn't been online. So I know finance in particular will be excited to have that. I know finance in particular will be excited to have that move over. It'll make a big difference.
Right. Anything else, guys? Thank you, Amy.
Can I ask one more Harvard question? Sorry, was there any resolution about the Styrofoam? From last fall that was in Old Harbor?
There is not, um. And with the anticipation that a similar product may be deployed this season. We are prepared to deal with it in a different way should a similar incident arise.
Okay.
So I would say we're ready.
Great. Okay.
I'd forgotten all about that.
I know, but then I saw some.
I don't know. Did we determine where it was from? Was it from Vineyard Wimp?
My understanding is it could not be determined exactly where it was from, which is why we could not reach any conclusion.
Gotcha. No, I, I mean, I was. Terrific. Any other questions? No?
This is great. Thank you.
Are we doing a review and financial reports or waiting for Mona?
We are not doing financial reports. Mona's on vacation.
Oh, good for her.
Yes.
Deserved. All right, uh, item 10, act upon the request of the Committee for the Great Salt Pond to adopt a resolution in support of HB. Five seven oh six and SB oh. Seven, seven, five, supporting CRMC reform. Uh, full disclosure, uh, I did that, did the draft that you'll see in your packets. But it literally was that. And so, no, uh, I, I, I tried to stay relatively high level, uh, indicate that we were. Very much impacted uh, by uh, CRM C and its approach. And advocated for a more modern, science-driven approach to decision-making. Henry?
Yeah, which?
Hi, Tony, Paul and uh. We, we great so far and um. We um, have been following hearings, sending them capital to the, sending in the letters. To the committee members and as I, we pointed out, there's two competing bills. The Jeff, who we described with regard to abolishing the council of existence. Moving it to a state regulatory agency like the EM. And uh, that competing bills seek to retain the council in one way or the other. And those bills are naturally supported by the governor and by the speaker because they get to appoint people. And uh, you know, it's, it's, they're not interested in reform, so. Even though these aren't up for a vote this week or anything like that, it's important that all the municipalities and whatever write in, keep the. Flame under the burden and ask that, you know, we do move this out of committee and to the uh, House and Senate floors. And I'm hoping that you'll speak to our representatives. Who may support other bills just because uh, they haven't heard from us. They know we're some of the competing bills, uh, which are hurt, uh, so it'd be good to check into them, make sure that. They know that we're supporting the two bills that will actually uh, reconstitute the same state.
Yeah.
And not fall for the other bills that the speakers they want or, or something.
Terrific. Thank you, Henry. Hey Laurel.
Yeah.
In the uh, at the, the fourth whereas clause. There's, it's not a typo, but stylistically, there should be a return. After the and, and then a, a bold face on the whereas and the fifth whereas. See, see what I mean there?
So I'll make a motion, um, that we, we sign this and get it to uh, uh, to our, both our legislators and uh. Of the House and Senate.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, the ayes have it. Henry, that's the easiest thing that's ever happened at the town council. Wonderful. Terrific. Thank you so much.
And we should probably also send a copy to Sue Sizniewski.
Yes.
She's sponsor of the Senate.
Yeah.
Committees, yeah.
Yep. Uh, let's see. Act upon a resolution opposing the removal of U.S. Coast Guard aids to navigation in and around Block Island waters.
This is an odd one.
I'll make a motion to send this letter.
Can I, can I ask one thing? Uh, motions have been made and seconded, uh, for discussion. Henry, thank you for doing this, uh, this draft. The, I'm not sure, the, the Southwest Ledge Lighted Buoy is the one. That is on the far south side of the ledge, correct? So the, the, the question I had is the, is the Bell Buoy at Southwest Point, which is also, I think, important. Oh, that one is retained? Gotcha. Okay.
Wait, yeah, can you come up? Yes, it's interesting.
I like the resolution that, that you dropped or.
But did you draft this, Amy?
Well, I, you know, they also just, including resolutions. I actually like the one. That Amy or whoever, the Hopperman or whoever put together for you. There's been a lot in the press about this.
Yeah.
Steve Land has mentioned quite often because he is a big proponent of save our buoys. And I've also written all the yacht clothes, uh, the off-soundings, uh, Storm Drive, so everybody to try and get a bill on board. Because none of this makes any sense. These buoys were put in, in the 19th century to save lives and, and whatnot. And if you contact the first district or anything. They say, oh, well, you can find the rocks with an app on your phone. Well, you can also find them with a keel of your boat. When there isn't a boat for buoys.
Yeah.
And some of the places that they're planning to remove buoys, like Woods Hole Passage. The current goes through there four and a half knots and when it's behind you, they take out half the buoys. It's a minefield of rocks there and the fears come in the other direction. I mean, you know, it just doesn't make any sense. What I would like to recommend that you add to this, you know, they say, think globally, act locally. Well, this resolution that you have is very, very specific to Block Island. But they're going to plan to remove 350 buoys in District One, 150 in the Gulf of Maine, which is another. Minefield of rocks. And so I would just add, make it a little bit broader. I mean, keep it where it is with regard to Black Island, but also just mention that for the entire district. They should think twice about removing buoys. For example, they plan to remove R2 right off the point due to breakwater. And if you sail inside that, you're asking for trouble. You know, and, and also we're going to remove the two buoys right off of uh, you know, G5. And uh, Old Harbor One, those two buoys are used by the ferry. In fog with a radar to line up on the harbor entrance. And um, Captain uh, Hall said, that's what they do. And especially there's times at night, for example, when the, the lights on shore are very confusing when you're trying to find entrance that are low harbor. Those buoys that make it easy. So I, I would add a few sentences to broaden out from Block Island to, to include all District One in a, in a sense that. So, so that we're not just that, um. You know, each place is just asking for their own buoys. They're also asking for anything else.
Well, how about, how about if in that last and be it further resolved? We ask the Coast Guard to engage in a collaborative process with all District One stakeholders.
Yeah.
Just change that.
Yep, yep, perfect.
Yeah, no, so, so um. It, it doesn't look like we're just asking for ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause this is a global problem.
I also think we need to, uh, given his relationship with the Coast Guard, make sure that um. Senator Reed and his staff get this.
Yeah, we will. All four Rhode Island representatives have sent letters to the Coast Guards, but um, we will make sure they get our input.
Yeah.
I mean, they, you know, the Coast Guard's under their um, oversight. And the whole, and they, they've been pretty level-headed, you know, well, you should, if it bothers you, you should write in and stuff. But you can tell that they're opposed to it, but they really need to be opposed to it for us to get some good traction.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Henry.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Um, I assume that that motion in second was with the changes used.
The one change of the all.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, the ayes have it. Thank you for whoever drafted that. It was very nicely done. Item 12, receive an act on a recommendation to work with the nature conservancy to safely reroute Clayhead Trail through plat two, lot 24 of the Whitman property. For limited pedestrian passage. Amy, do you want to talk about this, please?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, um. The nature conservancy through Charlotte did, did reach out asking if the town would consider allowing Clayhead Trail to be rerouted as. As indicated in the proposed map. Given that the trail is now dangerously close to the edge, it seems to be one of the only ways to preserve the continuity. Of this really critical piece. Um, I've also included the Whitman deed for that property and. Been through it several, several times at this point, and I do think that a very limited walking path is not inconsistent with the terms of that gift.
Great.
And I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to approve that because, you know. The deed does grant access for, for certain things, so implied in access is some sort of walking uh, ability there, so.
And is there a second? The motion was made and seconded. Uh, I, I would also add, uh, as someone who's a frequent walker, I no longer walk that trip. Particularly with, with a dog, uh, because it. Makes my heart beat too fast, even though that's what I'm out there for. So motions have been made and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? If not, all those, yeah, please. Got to come up here, Charlotte, sorry.
The Lappin family have been out and they actually have, they have to bypass it on their own property. For the time being, but still it's, it's just a, a fix now where.
Temporary, yeah.
Yeah.
Not like suppressing that. But it's nice to know that we can.
Yeah.
Play some time, do a safety.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Please, uh, as always, extend our thanks to the Lappins because uh. What they have permitted on their land, um, is genuinely extraordinary, so uh, please pass that along. But I, but I agree with you, Charlotte. I think we ought to, uh, if nothing else. Reserve Amy's ability to engage uh, with you on this. So motion's been made and seconded to that effect. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, the ayes have it. Uh, right. Item 13, Puck Enterprises. Amy?
So as you all remember, in November, there was a ballot question authorizing the borrowing of up to $1 million to finance a fresh and/or saltwater portable pump. For the fire department. The specifications have not changed since that time. And you have in your packet both the current quote, um, which is what we're asking for authorization to execute tonight. And then the original presentation, uh, with that ballot question. So from Puck, who is the only distributor of this equipment in Rhode Island. We're looking for a 577 horsepower pump, the hose cart, and then the other related accessories. Again, nothing has changed from the original proposal. What is carved out of this? Uh, because the total before you today is 836,925 dollars. Is the vehicle, um, used to tow it that will be procured through a different vendor from the state MPA? So we've carved that out.
That as well?
I actually don't think you need to see that.
So this will cover that?
This will not cover that, but we have a process in place.
Great.
Under state purchase controls.
Yep.
This one is a little bit more unique, um, one, because it's the primary piece of equipment. We want to make sure we have your authorization and it is a sole source procurement as well, so we want to be more visible about the process.
So maybe I missed that. So that gets around the bidding process?
It doesn't get around the bidding process. It is a part, is a channel in the bidding process. What's? I'm going to anticipate some of your questions, Tristan, so stop me if I get too far down a path. In developing their specifications, the fire department was very specific about what they are looking for in terms of the portability, the size. The ability to deploy, deploy pretty quickly with a small team. Um, and so what the department has identified. Is this piece of equipment from Puck Enterprises. Puck Fire and Puck Enterprises are the only distributor of this piece of equipment, of Puck equipment in Rhode Island. So we wind up with Puck Enterprises out of Iowa because they are the only distributor. The fact that this sort of unique piece of equipment is only built by Puck. Is the, I think where you have some questions.
I might. Uh, so Chris, the committee on this is who? On the pump. Come up, come up here, Chris, if you don't mind.
It was never a committee established, but it was talked about in many meetings at the department, and we had one brought here and tested, et cetera, but it was the. The members decided to move forward and really the council over a year, a year and a half ago, that's the direction we want.
So we, we kind of built it around this. The spec is built off Puck. So we didn't, we didn't demo anything else. Right. And then did we do any calculations on the downtown district?
As far as.
Like volume needed?
For the, for the fire load that we have downtown?
Yeah, just take. So how about just one building? How about just one building?
I can tell you the hard side will probably flow on at least 8,000 gallons a minute. This unit will push 4,500. We have three, we have a three cast, the marine cast force. It's another 6,500 gallons, so if we could have the marine cast force here, that pump plus our tanker, that's quite a bit of work.
Right. I, I'm not against the pump. I'm just, I, I would like to see a little bit more due diligence just on, this might be the pump. But I think we should put a little more time in to the spec, see what's needed, see the actual flow that we might need. Your bad situation down there, say you get something fully engulfed and then it runs on you. Is this pump that you've specked out, the puck, puck pump, is that enough if you have to move apparatus, say, out of town? Well, let's say, well, let's just go down into Bridgegate or something. Is this going to be adequate? At, what is it, 4,500 gallons?
Amy, can I just ask a question? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but we went through this last year. This was a vote at, at a financial town meeting. Where the community had approved and these specifications were put forth. I mean, to me, the time has sort of passed. I'm, I don't want to second guess. What the fire department does, because this is what I recognized I was voting for, uh, at the financial town meeting.
Specific piece of equipment or for an amount of money for this type of equipment?
It was fairly specific.
Uh, and that's why, uh, why I included the original, um, materials that were part of the referendum. Because it was very specific as to the specifications. It never used the brand name. But it outlined the volume, the intention, the deployment, the pump, the trailer, the boom, the manifold. Sort of all the specifications, as you said, that, that come with this piece of equipment, it just didn't use the singular brand name.
So I guess then I would ask the same kind of question that Tristan's asking. So I guess then I would ask the same kind of question that Tristan's asking is that it, is there, are there other companies that make the same equipment?
That piece of equipment is very unique. Nobody else has thought of it by this company. If you put out a bid, you'll get U.S. pumps and they'll send, they'll bid a trailer pump, but their head units are on hydraulic runs that know you have to deploy over water. Right? And then your hose is connected to it also. So what we liked about this one, I really feel like we're going backwards, is that this can be deployed by a couple people, tow it down, tap it up to a water source. There's a boom on it. It has a head pump that's hydraulically driven. It's put into the water as a frame. That forces to the main pump and then move it forward.
Moving backwards. So on the, on the total reach of this one, just because the spec is in here, what's the total reach?
I think it's 40 feet.
40 feet.
Forty, forty-five.
From the unit.
Forty-five, Amy, so. Forty-five. So if we have to get over something, like if you have to park in the busy, say it's summer and you got to get over a car down at Old Harbor?
Yeah, New Orleans comes in mind and the condition needs over anywhere.
And then a low tide? Do we know that distance? Did we figure that out?
Pick these spots. You know, yeah, you know, depending on tides, weather, et cetera, depth of water. When we had it down at Old Harbor, I don't remember what the tide was.
High.
It was a high and we weren't that, plus you only have to put it down so far into the water to get below the surface of the water. It wasn't like you was pushing it down by feet into the water.
Is, is this the biggest pump that Puck makes?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm leaning back more on, on an engineer kind of assessing it. Give a couple of structures downtown. Is this going to be adequate?
It would be interesting, but I think if we had the harbor side and the new shorm house and Mohegan and all the way down, we will not have enough water for whatever it is. It would have been a big wind factor, you know, or manpower. And also engines forward to deploy that water towards the east. You know, there's just a certain storm down there that we're not going to be able to control. But if we can get enough GPMs, as much as we can afford to get now, like we did at the harbor side, it worked out well. But if this was another 4,500 gallons a minute and we can't get the marine boats here, at least we can hold our own with the unit.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I understand your concern, Tristan, but this is all information that went, seemed to have gone through.
So if we, if we did, if we purchased this or we approved the purchase of this tonight, 836,925, right, Amy? For all pieces of equipment, what's the lead time on it?
Six to eight months.
Well, let's call it a year. Do we have any place to store it? We're going to go back, going in reverse. No place to keep it, right?
I talked to Jeff Roy again, also he's off at the top lot. We can get power to the top lot so you can have the pump up there. The tow unit can stay at the station and then the trailer, the hose trailer can be either at the station or next to this. And we can have a power post or anything to open it as a spec state that there is a custom cover that will cover the unit until the time that we can get it inside. No matters, I don't know.
But obviously with the, with the new building, this is all planned into the new building and the storage in the new building, and we won't have that white.
We have to be gone.
Tent and everything will be housed. Okay.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to, to enter into the agreement with Puck Enterprises. Partly because I've had people ask me since it's been quite a while, you know, why hasn't it been, been ordered yet?
I'll second that. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 No. Opposed, no. Three to one. Thank you, Chris. Raise items for future agendas. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay. I have, did you just say agenda things?
Yes.
Yes, I did. Speak now or forever hold your peace, Margarrett.
Can you be a little more specific?
Like, I really want to know, disc golf.
Disc golf, pickleball, bocce.
Yep. Good thought. Thank you. Future agenda.
How about, are we getting back into golf carts in the interest?
I'd be happy to get back into golf carts.
And then I'll bring up, you and I, we need to set a.
Yes. Yes.
I guess that would be one.
Yes. That's been my ball that dropped. Yes.
Oh, is that?
So I guess I'll add, you know, for discussion topic, I guess, it's in our right to restrict them to the town road.
On town roads, yes. Yes.
I guess that was discussion point.
Absolutely.
Is, so is that part of your committee discussion?
I'm rolled things together. One was a safety committee and then future agenda, golf carts and town roads.
Okay, because.
And to me, the golf cart thing includes further, further the conversation around rental cars.
I, I also misinterpreted your comment to think that we were meant rental cars.
I think it's, I think it's all under the same.
Same, okay.
Just so I'm clear.
As an agenda item?
As an agenda item at this table or at the transportation safety committee?
Yes, and I'm going to quote Amy Lang.
I understand what that means.
Well, can I suggest in the order of things that it started your committee and then bring it here?
No, that's separate. This table, I think we should all talk about.
Yeah, we should talk about. Yeah. Yeah. Beautiful. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Say, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. We are adjourned.